Okay, we'll get going, Don. Nineteenth and second Avenue. Making last-minute notes. Nope, you're fine.
On the council tonight, uh, we put a resolution together authorizing an RFP, uh, on the property the city owns at nineteen oh one Second Avenue. And I just want to go over it with you, and if you want, you see something in the RFP you want to change, please change it tonight. It's really pretty short and simple. When we describe the property, uh, one of the things we tell people is it's an hundred-year floodplain. So if they, uh, do significant improvements to the building, that could be an issue, so just, just a flag. The other thing that it's owned, uh, are three multifamily. They may propose a use that requires rezoning. So they know that. I guess what we are saying is the condition is we're selling it as is. Uh, we did get a, uh, market assessment from a local realtor for two hundred sixty-one, so we're saying that's the minimum base bid. And, um, we're not restricting the type of development. Um, but we're also then saying you may have to rezone it. And, um, again, we mentioned the floodplain requirements. So, you know, what you might have more interest in is what we're asking the people. We're asking for their name, their address, uh, a brief description of their background. And I mean, brief. You know, if they have an idea of a site plan, that'd be great. We're not actually looking for a architectural site plan or an engineering site plan, but, uh, we put in there a scalable map that they can use, so draw on it. Like to know a timeframe. And, uh, if they're going to do significant renovation to the building, uh, we'd like to know those costs. And we're asking how they finance the acquisition and, and renovation. Uh, we gave a deadline of November twenty-ninth and, um, just basically said, put in the sealed envelope and send it to us. Um, you'll see an application in there that goes over the things I just talked about. Um, once we get them, we will review them and bring it forth to you. I think our intention is the meeting, I think it's December nineteenth, is that the meeting, December? So with a recommendation.
So as far as zoning, it's gonna need to change its zoning, and my assumption is we're not gonna allow them to change it to industrial or heavy industrial. Should we limit it to commercial? There's a commercial property across the street, so it's not spot zoning, but...
It's actually industrial across the street.
Is it?
Yeah.
So, alright.
Catalina Foundry is owned, I think, light industrial. Uh, I think, is it a labor place, labor-ready maybe?
Labor-ready, yeah.
At nineteenth?
Yep.
I think that's commercial.
Okay.
I mean, it's a concern, so...
I mean, at the end of the day, with, no matter with all this stuff, it goes the highest bidder, right?
Well, we did also put in there, and you might want to take a look at that, I forgot.
See the point scale or whatever?
I put a scale in there. Um, maybe the highest bidder isn't, uh, the best project.
It's written in such a way that we would have discretion to not go with the highest bidder.
So you think about that. I mean, I put twenty, price at twenty points, the proposed reuse at twenty-five points. As a compatibility to the neighborhood, um, feasibility, I mean, you could debate whether that should be there.
So will we see all the...
Yes, you would see.
We'll see all of them, no matter what?
Okay. So you might want to take a look at that, and if you think it's, you know, should be scaled differently. Because if somebody came in and said, you know, I'll pay you two hundred sixty thousand, and I'm gonna invest three million in it, and I'm gonna build, uh, a twelveplex. You know, that's, uh, between three and three and a half million dollars, uh, it's probably gonna suss out at one point eight million. And if somebody came in and says, well, I just want to buy it, and I'm going to park, a fleet, or, that I personally... Then really, you're looking at the sale price of the building being basically your taxable value over time. So I think there, there are scenarios where, you know, longer term you look, you, you know, a deal that, uh, may produce more taxes than, than just the purchase price, or more revenue than just the purchase price.
Okay.
And also, you know, if somebody came in and wanted to put a kennel or something in there, knowing that we have residential in that area too, we would want an option to say, maybe not the best use for that location.
Now, one thing I think I would say is, is that if you have an expressed interest, you, you know, email those names to me, so I get them out. I think I have most people, we've had, I think, about five. The other thing too is, is I would say, now that we put a number on it, um, some of the people that have expressed interest may not follow through, so that's a real possibility. Yep?
Any other questions for Don? Alright, review agenda, anything on the consent agenda?
I got a question on D, three D. On the, what was the original, I know that was more talked about in, in executive session. So I don't know if we want to discuss that now, or... I, I don't recall the original contract number and, and all that. Cause I know...
The, uh, the original payment is for tracks one through five, and it's twenty-five thousand dollars a year.
And so now it's thirty, and it's...
So like, we've added one track, so now it's, the agreement's for six tracks instead of five. And instead of twenty-five thousand, it's for thirty. And they're also gonna build the fence along the tracks, and they're gonna give the city the sixteen-acre parcel on the river.
Did we originally talk about six months, or were we talking about one year of non-use? To, to lease the right to the...
That, it's twelve months, that was part of the original agreement.
Was that part of the...
Twelve?
I couldn't remember.
Twelve months of continuous non-use would be, would constitute an abandonment of the business.
What if, if future city government wanted to use it, some great opportunity came up? Should we, and I just sort of said it as an idea, should we have some sort of mechanism of ending it early as opposed to just breaching it? Cause if they don't stop using it for a year, and it's twenty seventy-five, and the city government at that time wants to, has got this great proposal for something there, we'd have to breach the agreement.
I think that was the whole purpose of the agreement, from their perspective.
Oh, sure, but from my perspective, I don't want, I, I hate setting up agreement that the only way we can get out of it is by breaching it, and then having a court tell us how much the taxpayers have to pay them for the value of it in twenty seventy-five. Probably gonna be more than thirty thousand.
Value of the business. If, if it renders them...
Yeah, if it renders, yeah, you're right, it'd be the value of the business, and who knows? I don't know what railroads will be worth in the future, but imagine they'll still be worth quite a bit of money. I, I doubt everything's flying by that point.
One-year notice, and we have the right to get out or something?
I, I, I don't know, and I appreciate that would affect their willingness probably to give on other things, maybe the ground or other things, but...
Well, what, we talked about original, do we, what is that sixteen acres worth? What is it worth us? Are we gonna sell it to Waterworks, give it to Waterworks? I know it's right down by there.
Yeah, I...
I think it'll be worth is in the future, I think those sorts of entities will...
Grow.
Well, I, I don't know about, it, it may, but if nothing else, the way the world goes, I suspect we'll just need more barriers around public utilities.
And I don't know where we are on this, but there was a Iowa, um, E and R stipulation that they take the byproduct of the water cleaning process and let it sit on ground and, and leach out. And they didn't have anywhere to do that, and so they would have huge trucking expense to take it somewhere else. If that comes back up, this would give them an opportunity to use that site in close proximity and save the cost of trucking.
No, is that something that, obviously they operate separately? Are we, would we sell that to them, give it to them, let them use it? Cause I mean, they're not, right? I mean, all I've ever heard is they're completely separate.
I don't think we have any plans, uh, for any use. I mean, its primary purpose initially is just to protect the investment of the community in the Waterworks, make sure that some use doesn't go in there that perhaps could harm the Waterworks.
I think that's good. I, I just raised the question of since the South Expressway is our south entrance to town, and once we have twelve lanes of interstate in that area, and it's no disrespect to the tradition of, of grain elevators, I just wonder if in fifty or a hundred years, a grain elevator at the main entrance to town makes sense? I mean, we got rid of Bungee on the west end because it didn't really make sense. And does that area still make sense? It probably does today, frankly. Should it in a long-term plan for that, is that the highest and best use? I'm not a real estate expert, but my guess is, is it's, as the entrance to town next to an area, we want to be commercial and... I'm gonna guess it's probably not.
Well, I think that should've sailed a long time ago. Uh, the city had an opportunity to buy it, and, uh, we said, no, we don't want it.
That's true.
The elevator, they're, you know, they're not going to...
I don't know about in fifty years, though.
Their interest here is to make sure that, that the city can't walk in here one day and say, you're gone.
Oh, I agree, but from our perspective, I want to be able to walk, I want it to be easier to walk in there if fifty years from now, the city, I don't, I don't want to get in a situation where they have us over a barrel in fifty years, and we've got this fantastic new opportunity on our new southern front door, twelve-lane interstate, being stuck with a grain elevator.
But if you were a grain elevator...
If I were them, yeah, but I'm not them.
Well, but, uh, they, they get nothing. If the city has the ability to kick them out at any time, then...
Oh, I, I agree, but I'm not negotiating for them.
My question, Greg, though, would go back to the original lease that transfers to us for tracks one through five. That property's being transferred to us, but it's already encumbered by that lease, right? I mean, so it, it's coming to us with all the duties that were in that original lease, which if I understood that, it doesn't have a time that it cuts off either, other than one year of non-use. So I don't know that.
So five is, so it's just one track?
Yeah, but it's one...
We're only talking about one track, yeah.
But it's a track they need, and it's a track closer to our new southern entrance next to a twelve-lane interstate. For another five...
We're talking about one additional track?
Yeah, for another five, yeah, but for another five thousand, who knows if the South Expressway needs to widen, which it probably will within a hundred years.
Is this just for six then, or is this for all of them?
Six.
This clarifies that they're gonna lease all six tracks for a price of thirty thousand dollars.
It wouldn't be seven or eight.
This thing supplements the original agreement, it doesn't replace the original agreement.
Right, so one through five, no matter what, we can't take?
Correct.
Without breaching the agreement, yeah.
Without breaching the contract.
Yeah, which we could do.
Obviously, for this particular one.
Right.
So Nate would have the option to take, in his scenario, the option just to take one more lane. We'd take seven and eight and one more.
I'm not sure what purpose that would serve us.
That's what I'm saying, I, I don't...
Well, within a hundred years, I imagine, you know, when the interstate was built, they probably thought two lanes each direction would more than, actually, I did see the, some of the plans, they thought that would last until the, the mid-part of the century, and it, and it didn't.
But we have room to widen there with the remaining seven and eight, and the service trains have to be put in, don't we?
I'm, I'm just saying, it's a pretty, it's a pretty nice area for only five thousand more a year.
I, what I get out of Councilman Watson's comment is, what if we don't want an elevator there at all?
That, that's kind of what I'm saying, because we, we didn't want one in the west end in nineteen fifty. It probably made sense, as I understand it, but in twenty fifty, will a elevator right next to, and I have no disrespect to elevators or farmers, just, in a city of our size, does that make sense at our...
But the original, we can't get out of anyway.
Right.
So, you know...
Well, we're, we're making it worse if you're trying to get out of it, is all I'm saying. We're just, we're, we're pinning in our option, and maybe, maybe that's the right answer, I just want us to really think about it. And I don't know how I feel yet, I'm somewhat concerned, we're, if, part of our goal of consolidating the railroads is to move them where it makes sense. And that area's gonna be a twelve-lane interstate, main exit to the south edge of town. At least for the next hundred years, I would think, um, or so. Does it make sense to, to do all that work and then make it poss, more likely that railroads and grain elevators will continue to exist in that area? Does that make sense to all the other businesses investing millions of dollars in commercial? And the taxpayers paying for the road to widen there to keep making it easier for grain elevators to operate there? Does that make sense? I mean, we, we seem to have conflicting purposes in that area.
That's a feeder elevator to sire, ain't it?
No, a hundred percent of that grain goes to, is shipped overseas.
Which, which is good, and I, I certainly am not against farmers, I just, and again, this gets me in trouble with my own family north of town, but we pay to clean up all their water from all the pesticides they put in it. So on one hand, I'm sympathetic to them, but on the other, we're doing them an awful lot of favors and already having to pay to take all the crap out of the water they put into it.
If it wasn't just one more lane, I might agree with you a little bit more, but if we can't get out of one through five anyway, another ten-foot track six doesn't affect it to me at all.
If, if you sell me or let me, rather, not sell, but let me lease, uh, a tracks width along the South Expressway for five thousand a year, I'd take it.
Sold.
But you'll give me, you'll, I mean, if we're gonna do that for them, we're gonna be, you know, and we're trying to get the other area, we're gonna have a hard time negotiating, take like South Twenty-Fourth or what have you.
Well, this all goes back almost eight years, though.
Sure.
I mean, the whole idea of them being impacted evolved from the interstate reconstruction, railroad relocation...
Sure.
Which tried to, um, keep everybody whole.
Well, I agree, I just, at the one hand, they, they got paid money for that, so I don't want to make it too easy to stay there if they got money.
I don't think Bartlett got paid any money.
Well, they, so you're saying that the DOT took their property and didn't give them just compensation?
No, the property that we're talking about, transferring is from the railroad to the city.
Sure. But I'm, I'm saying we're talking about maybe giving them additional ground that'll make it more likely a grain elevator still exists there in twenty-one hundred. And I'm saying maybe that's not a good idea.
Well, since we would have to, in order to impact them in any way, we would have to, um, break our lease on the other tracks. I have one more track, you know, breaking the lease on one more track's really not gonna be any different, you know, if you're ever looking to get them out and...
If there were a legally binding document they could sign, that in the year twenty-one hundred, they don't make an argument that the taking of that property, if one more lane, isn't worth millions of dollars, I might be more agreeable. I just think they're gonna make an argument, I would, frankly, that suddenly the taking's far worse.
Well, that's a pretty fundamental change to what I was led to, direction I was provided. This is the first I've heard of changing that condition.
I, I, I don't think I'm in the majority on this, I don't think it changes the direction, but this is what I've thought all along. I'm, I'm not in the majority, clearly, but that's okay.
I can't read your mind, though, you gotta tell me what you're thinking, and you gotta get a consensus.
Well, no, we, we had a consensus, it just wasn't entirely unanimous. I, I just...
If I was the elevator, I would say...
And since we're talking about it publicly, I want people to know what I think.
Take a hike, we'll see in court, if you're gonna terminate the prior agreement. They're already claiming the track six, they have a legal right to track six.
Uh, yeah, and their argument's specious, but I, I appreciate their argument. But they're gonna say it's worth more than five thousand dollars in fifty years. Uh, because I would, I'd say that in twenty years. I, I just want us to be clear when we talk about this, that i- is our goal as part of these things to make people, as, as a city, we, we spend a, a lot of money on these areas for one purpose, and then we make it, like, take the Mack area where we spend millions, make it a destination area, and then we help existing businesses, eighteen-wheel trucks, stay in that area that's contrary to the millions we're spending on another purpose. I, I just, when we spend the money, I'd like us to be consistent, we can't be all things to all people. If we're gonna spend it on, like, in that area, we spend millions for, for it to be a destination for families, and then we keep making it incentivized for eighteen-wheel trucks to be right next to mothers in their Prius. That's why they don't go there, well, it's one reason. I, I just think...
Well, I mean...
We, we can't be all things, if we're gonna keep spending money in, in that area for commercial business and wanting families to go there to spend money, we've got it, we might want to scale back on that if we want it to remain grain elevators. We can't, you can't do both. Long-term, I mean, that's why people get mad and say, well, what the heck, why, why are there train tracks right next to Walmart? Well, long-term, those go, but then they're gonna say, well, what the heck's this grain elevator here in twenty-one hundred? Well, the council decided they didn't want to change a business back a hundred years ago. And then they're gonna curse us. Because we did it with Bungee.
We can't change it anyway, cause the lease that's in place now.
Well, we're gonna make it harder to change it, is all I'm saying. So I, if our goal is, if, if then we have a plan come forward to put in trails or to put in more commercial incentives, and we've, our consensus is, no, we'd prefer to make it easier for a grain elevator to stay there, then I think later, when that comes up for incentives, I think then, to be consistent, a person has to vote against this. They've said they'd want that area to stay as it is. I just think we, I think we overpromise.
Alright, any other discussion? Alright, anything else on the consent agenda?
My computer keeps updating.
Anything on the public hearings, the bonds?
Yeah, uh, I'd like to, uh, follow up with some, uh, information with Mr. Georgette, if I may. We, uh, had a very productive session on Monday, and I wanted to follow up on that, if I may. And, uh, I'll preface this by saying that I want to take, uh, the five bond actions kind of as a, as a whole, just to start out. And I'm, uh, I'm returning again to the discussion that was held on the, during the time of the CIP, which we were talking about, capital improvements, uh, uh, program. And, uh, and you were talking about our decreased, uh, bonding capacity, uh, for, uh, for this fiscal year as well as for next fiscal year. And I was just wondering if you would be so kind as to recap that discussion again? Why, as to why that is?
I will try to do that, we, uh, we had a pretty wide-ranging discussion. But the, um, the point in this is that we have, we have managed our debt to this point where, in order to issue more debt, uh, to do more projects, we've changed the way that we amortize the debt, we've changed the way that we sell the debt, we've changed the way that we pay it off. And normally, what will happen is you'll have projects drop off every year, and then that amount of levy can be used to sell different bonds, to do different projects without raising taxes to the, to the, uh, community. Uh, we're at a point right now where we don't have any bonds dropping off the repayment schedule during about a three-year period. And so if we're going to sell additional bonds to, um, to do more projects, we're either going to have to find somewhere else in the tax levy that will absorb that and move it to the debt service levy, or we have to raise the debt service levy to make that happen. And it's been my impression that we would rather not raise the debt service levy above its traditional two forty to two fifty per thousand, um, level. Once we get past the, the next couple of years, we have one more year where the, the bonds were amortized in a way that one principal takes a jump of about four hundred thousand dollars in one year. And this is what the financial advisors call wrapping the debt around, uh, the other issues to try to keep it level. It's not a strategy that I would necessarily recommend, because I think it, it hides a little bit of what we're trying to do in leveling out and making our levy a little more transparent. So, once we get past that, things start falling off of the repayment schedule. What we will replace that with is rather than fifteen-year amortizations of our regular capital improvement bonds, we want to cut that back to ten years. That not only frees things up sooner, but it reduces the amount of interest that we pay on any particular bond. And it's just, um, better, um, better use of best practices advice from the, the GFOA.
Right.
So it's not a case of debt capacity, it's a case of payment timing. I, I mean, it's a capacity issue if you're gonna keep the debt service levy at the same level, but...
Correct.
But we're at thirty-some percent of our allowable debt capacity, and, and so we could incur more debt, we just have to raise the debt levy in order to do it.
We could, uh, we do have this levy is going to raise that thirty percent a little bit, and then we do have the, uh, police station coming up, which is going to take a pretty significant chunk of that. There is a project we've talked about with the, um, levy reconstructions and certification project that we can move along to two and a half million dollars a year and try to get that done, or we can use the sales tax, uh, that's been pledged by the state for that as, uh, a revenue stream to pay a bond initially that will allow us to get that done, closer to the time that the flood maps are being withdrawn, or being drawn. That's one we have to think about, we have to take a look at what that impact is gonna be, uh, from several different angles, and, and, uh, it's possible to do it, but we'd have to look at what the, what the impact would be on our, on our, uh, use of the limitation of debt and, uh, versus what we would gain from getting the projects done sooner. Does that, does that get to where you were going?
Uh, partially, yeah. And, and in the staff package and in the Excel or in the spreadsheets that you gave us...
Yeah.
At that time, uh, it does point out, uh, something that you were alluding to, the fact that we're reprogramming to ten-year bonds, and then you, then you, uh, place the amount of, uh, of bonds available, ten-year bonds available out through FY twenty-one.
Right.
And, uh, for this year, bonds available, uh, six million, seven hundred thousand. Uh, next year, that drops off to two million, five hundred thousand. The following year drops off to zero.
And again, the reason for that zero is that, that yellow highlighted nine hundred, I think it's nine hundred and twelve thousand...
Yep.
Principal payment, that's...
I, I understand.
A little bit of an odd way to program a, a debt retirement.
Understand. And, and this year, you, you included, I guess on top of that, six point seven million dollars, you, uh, you added back, uh, Playland Park Phase Two, as well as the Echo, Echo acquisition, which were both CIP, uh, included in, for last year's CIP, not the current CIP. So, so those bonds did not get sold, or they were sold and proceeds weren't sufficient, or...
Those bonds did not get sold, there was at, at, in, I believe it was January of fifteen, there was to be a, a revision of the, um, CIP before it was presented to the council, and a couple of projects were reduced. Somehow those projects made it into the final copy of the, of the, um, CIP that was adopted by the council. At that point, if you'll recall, I brought to you two what were called refunding resolutions. It said, if we're going to do these projects, we have to authorize that we're going to sell that debt later on to make those payments, to do those projects. And so that's, um, that's the reason for those two projects being in there.
Okay. And likewise, in the CIP documents that you gave us, I mean, it kind of goes along with this, uh... with this, projects by funding source, and then you have all the bond proceeds set out and the projects that were at least at that time identified as as making up the the bond proceeds. And we have this year's bond proceeds accounted for. We have the proposal for for next fiscal year. And then the fiscal years following that, the anticipated bond or anticipation for projects being funded by bond source drops off dramatically.
It does. And if you if you we had a conversation about that this morning in the director's meeting that if you look at the the projected sources in the CIP document, we have we have hopes for $10 million more over the next two years in bond proceeds than what we can get by leaving the debt service levy where it's at. And so I don't presume to say we can't or won't raise the debt levy. That's up to you, not up to me. But we have in staff about finding ways to relocate, cut back, postpone those bonds funded projects so that as we build our capacity up at the debt service levy later on, we can begin to program those back in.
I'm very interested as we go through this, not only looking at what your requirements are, but what possibly we can either cut back, delay, possibly to preserve some of that bonding capacity into the future. If I may, turn turn attention briefly to the projects for Rivers Edge Park and and the bonding that has been done for for that project to date. We we had the decision in January 15 to approve $2 million in in general bond authority for that for that project. Were those bonds sold?
Yes.
And what were the proceeds used for?
For Phase One of Hanafin Rivers Edge Park.
Phase One only.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then in May of this year, I believe we we authorized 2.66 million dollars in bonds. Have those been sold yet? I would think probably not.
Oh, that's part of this.
I'm sorry?
That's part of this.
Okay. So that's been rolled forward. And that answers another question because I noticed that the CIP items that you had listed as rationale for those back in May reappeared in this package again. So if those were not not sold back then, that's why you're saying it's included now.
Yes.
And then part of the documents that you provided us, the study session two weeks ago, and I appreciate those very much, you had the reference to the parking lamp lease purchase down payment.
Yes.
And I did not see that as a part of the write ups in either 5B through 55F. So which which one of those bond offerings is that, $2 million going into for that garage lease down payment?
It's not a bond. It's a gaming revenue.
That is. I believe you've caught me something on that one. The January 15 authorization was the petition public hearing or the the presented petition public hearing. Which was to be the contribution to the development in Rivers Edge Park.
Mm hmm. Early on.
Yes. That was not sold. And so that would not have been for Phase One. I'd have to go back and look at my records. That would not have been for Phase One on Rivers Edge Park. I'd have to double check what was actually used as bonding on Rivers Edge Park Phase One. Because I know there was money out there and I know it was sold and I know it was spent, but it was not that 2 million. That 2 million would have been an additional sale.
Right. And that's how it was authorized at the time.
Yeah. But an additional sale within the existing debt levy rate. That was my understanding of that one. There was not to be an additional debt levy for that one.
Okay. On your spreadsheet, it it shows the parking lamp ramp lease down payment as part of the 2016B taxable offering, taxable bond offering.
No, 2016B is entirely for the purchase of the Echo properties in the West Broadway Urban Renewal Area.
So there's nothing in this in any of these five bond offerings that would go to support that the funding of that lease down payment?
No. What's in the bond, rather than funding that lease payment, because that bond would be a taxable bond, the idea was to take and move an equivalent amount of funds out of the gaming fund portion of the CIP into the bonding so that we would replace those projects or we would replace that lease down payment as a bond with specific projects in the bond. And then we would pay the lease down payment from the gaming fund. And because we take that out of the cash in the gaming fund, it's not debt. We don't pay interest on it. And because it would be taxable, we pay we avoid even more interest to the tune of about 85 to 100,000 on that issue.
That was my confusion because I remember when we discussed the the parking lease, that it was remarked at the time that that was going to be paid for out of TIF proceeds. And then there was follow on discussion saying, no, it's possibly going to be out of gaming proceeds. And then it shows up here on the spreadsheet indicating that somehow it's part of the bond offering. And I began to get greatly confused by it all. But which is it?
Well, I can understand that because in the process of putting this together, I spent a number of meetings with our bond attorney on this, making sure that we had the right orientation and the right pieces.
Poor man.
No, they are helpful. They I have to admit. I won't say anything about other kinds of attorneys, but. No, the 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 point in in making that change was at its very base, simply to save the interest costs and avoid issuing an additional taxable bond. And those savings, again, as I said, are in the range of 85 to 100,000. I thought that was worth making the recommendation to you folks on on that change in the approach to financing. What I would also point out is that with this financing package, this structure, we do not spend any additional funds, any additional projects that were not in the capital improvement plan that was adopted. We've simply changed the source of the funding for those. And in order to move some of those gaming fund pieces into the bond issue, we've changed the timing as well. But the amounts and the the approvals for those amounts for those specific projects have not changed.
So just to recap, I just want to make sure I heard you correctly that we discussed that 2.66 million offering back in May, she said, was was not sold. And that that time was classed two two different projects, PR 1606, which was Phase Two Piazza and then PR 1701.
Yes.
And those bonds were not sold, correct?
Correct.
So follow on question to to Dick. And I I didn't think of this back in May when we were having this discussion. But when we're talking about bonding authority, for general bond purposes or general funding purposes versus the essential purposes, the legislature did a rather exhaustive job of listing out what it meant by those by those two things. And in the discussion of of essential purposes, they they have they basically distinguish between building new facilities versus taking care, renovating, whatnot, existing facilities. And one of the parts included under essential services was the creation of of new parks, new park buildings, water parks, recreational facilities that didn't exist previously.
Essential or general?
Under essential.
Okay.
So I'm I'm wondering at this point, given given that definition as laid out in Iowa Code, whether or not we're on risky ground by including these in the bond submission that that we have. Are we not potentially running afoul of that of that piece of Iowa statute?
I need to go back and look at those definitions because they are quite detailed.
They are. And I had those printed out. And for the life of me, I'm not planning on. I think I may have just found it.
Oh, which which section are you looking at?
I was looking at the funding under.
I was talking about the Iowa Code.
Were you talking about the Iowa Code?
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
What'd you say?
Yeah, under. Yeah, it's chapter 384 or section 384, point 24. And then there's exhaustive definitions, not only of of city enterprise, but also what constitutes general and essential spending purposes for issuing those bonds.
And Dan, I'd assumed you wouldn't have gone over that with our bond counsel.
That's what I was going to bring up. I know this isn't probably what you want to hear, but we did go over that rather exhaustively to to classify what was essential, what was general, and try to look at in in a somewhat conservative approach and say, what is the possibility? Because there were a couple of things that were not clear cut that could be interpreted differently. And.
Which, Al, if I could ask, which which subsection are you concerned it doesn't meet?
I apologize for that. Sure. If you go to again, it's Iowa Code 384, point 24. Paragraph three defines essential corporate purposes. And then the language concerning recreational facilities, recreation grounds, whatnot, comes under.
The rehabilitation.
It comes under point four, which is general corporate purpose. And then under subparagraph four, you have subsubparagraph B under that. So it's the acquisition, construction, reconstruction, enlargement, improvement, equipping of community center houses, recreation grounds, recreation buildings, recreation centers, parks and golf courses. And the elements described in that particular CIP item, as well as in the staff write ups that were being considered previously for those, appears pretty much to fall solidly within that definition. So but you were coming to the point that was being made about by bond counsel?
Again, the bond counsel and I went over those improvements specifically as to whether they would be essential or general. They were marked in in my research as essential. That would be the feedback that I got from the attorney. I am nowhere near being an attorney.
I I think that those dealt a good amount with with roads. For example, the Piazza's a road, so that would be a right of way.
Also, the Piazza included the the additional rec building that was being constructed down there, the restrooms, the the water park, whatnot.
Yes.
That was all included under Phase Two.
I I believe that's right, yes.
And that was at least in the in the proposed write up for that CIP item?
I believe so.
PR 1701.
I appreciate the question. I our bond counsel is one of the most conservative and and known entities. I remember his school in Des Moines. They're rather well respected.
They err on the side of caution.
Well, I respect that.
I I appreciate that and that we could disagree. It seems to me that that could fall very well under the improvement of a park already owned, but I don't know the exact subsection they relied on. But certainly, it's arguable. I won't disagree with that. I I tend to err on the side of thinking it could fall under essential reasonably, but I don't have the I don't have their exact opinion, so I I'd be guessing.
Okay, well, I understand.
But you raised you raised you raised a point.
Yep. And just reading the the plain language here under four, four B, certainly raised questions in in my mind. So.
I can only give you the the information that I sought and received and based my recommendation on.
And from what you read, and it certainly sounded to me like it fell within the parameters of essential.
I see the contrary point. I I believe it does, but and I but I see the contrary point.
Sure. Because i- if you believe that that falls then under.
Two.
Under general, when it's described pretty much the same way as as essential, or I'm sorry, in the definition for general, then it it begins to lose its meaning after a while.
Well, this is the law.
Hence my point.
The joys of legislation. Tell them perfectly clear, or we would not have jobs.
Exactly.
Yep.
I think we can all agree on that.
Heard that joke when I was a freshman in law school. So having said that.
Yes.
Okay. So I think that kind of wraps up my questions about about bonding.
I have some questions on that. If you're are you done with that particular topic or?
Yeah.
I don't want to interrupt you. Thank you.
You press on.
Thank you. As I understand it, at times, and especially for for folks who might read the paper and otherwise hear about it, the idea of of any debt at all can sometimes be be frightening, the idea of taking out debt. I think all of us have an understandable appreciation and concern, just speaking of our personal lives about debt. But at the same time, I think it's important to remember, just like.
But at the same time, I think it's important to remember, just like in our own lives, we tend to take out debt for things that appreciate, that likely go up in value, and that things that you will need long-term to live or to prosper. In our case, for example, would you agree with me, it's somewhat like a small business getting started? Or, let's not start with a new business, let's start with an ongoing concern. A business, and I'm not a small businessman, so I greatly appreciate any education on this topic that my colleagues would give me. But as I understand it, there are times where, for cash flow reasons or for expansion so that you can take on additional employees or keep growing one's business, there are times where, particularly if you can do so at a favorable interest rate, there are times where, just like me, and I can speak to my own mortgage, I have to have a place to live. And hopefully, it'll be a place that appreciates in value over time, I hope anyway. You never know. But at the same time, it seems to me that there are times where it's prudent to take out a reasonable amount of debt so that you can hire that additional employee and keep that person on staff so that you can, over time, make a greater return, that is profit. And in our case, as a city, being able to provide services over time for greater people at a per-person lesser cost. It makes sense to take on debt, doesn't it? Maybe if you could give us just a bit of a primer about when debt is a good thing within bounds to have so that we understand, and more importantly, the people paying the bills understand that debt isn't always bad, if you agree with that premise.
Well, I agree with that premise. I'm just wondering if we can call out for Jimmy John's in about an hour.
Maybe more briefly than I'd expect.
More briefly?
And far more intelligently, I'm sure.
No.
If you're buying at Jimmy John's, I can press on.
That's true. What took them so long?
I agree that there are times when debt is a good thing for us to acquire. The example that I gave earlier about the levy changes that need to be made, we will get an income stream in over time that will cover that. But if we continue to break down our work into those pieces that fit that financing, we may not get it done.
So if we pay as we go, is that what you're talking about?
If we pay, if we just pay as we go...
Yeah.
We come up against some walls of getting the job done soon enough for it to be as useful as possible. And so we go ahead, or we may go ahead, and say, okay, let's do the bond so we can get this project done, and we'll pay for it.
Is it kind of like if we waited too long? And I'm sorry to interrupt you, but the, is it kind of like, just so I make sure I understand, if anyone else wants to jump in, tell me to shut up. If we, for example, with the levies, if we wait to pay as we go and build it as we've got cash in hand, setting aside for the moment that might not be quick enough for the federal government to suddenly declare a bunch of people in town have properties that are now worthless, if they redraw the maps...
You're way around.
God forbid, the bigger problem, even bigger than that, would be what if, if we wait, the levy could very well, we could have a rainy year here up north. And then, if we save money by not fixing it, not borrowing some at a good rate, then when people are seventeen foot underwater, literally, it really wouldn't have saved much money, to say the least.
Or...
Is that fair?
I think that's fair. If we truly need a law enforcement center, which I believe we do...
Sure.
We're going to do it on a cash basis. We won't do it for 20 years.
And that's way too long. So sometimes there's, so the question becomes, when is it prudent to borrow? And for what? Is that fair?
There's not a formula I can give you.
Sure.
But you have to think about the utility of the item you're purchasing. You have to think about the useful life of it.
Uh-huh.
You have to think about how you're actually going to pay for it. It may be that you'll issue enough debt to get it done, but you still don't have a good way to pay for it. If we were to go out and say, well, we need, I'm sorry about the two and a half million, but we need eight million in capital funds next year, and another two million, eight million after that, we haven't got a good way to pay for that except to raise taxes.
Sure.
And so you have to think of those kinds of things. If those fit into your model, as well as your utility, the situation we get in government is that we don't always, we don't always have a good return on investment to look at because we're not going to sell our police stations, we're not going to sell our assets, we're going to keep them when we're going to use them. In a business, I think the Echo project right now is probably an excellent example. They will have debt on their building, but they will be a bigger business, they will be more efficient and effective in one location.
And we kept them in council bluffs.
We kept them in council bluffs.
Those jobs and the taxes.
The thing to remember about that, though, is that the debt is not what pays the jobs. The debt is what makes the facility, the operations pay the jobs.
Mm-hmm. But the operations wouldn't be possible if they didn't have a building or a new road out front to deliver their product. And then, they would have been more likely to go to Omaha, which was heavily courting the...
Where?
Omaha. Echo, if you use that example.
I've heard of it.
Sarcasm gets past me every time. So, as we look to make these decisions, is another factor to consider, if we need to, if there's another funding partner that's willing to put up money to do a project, which is more likely to make the quality of life better and possibly retain and bring in more jobs. But they want us to contribute something at the time. And let me give you a specific example of River's Edge Park. If Iowa West or other funders are willing to put up money, but want us to have some skin in the game too, and put down some money, and we don't happen to have that money in cash at the bank this year, but it's a project long-term that maybe would help revitalize the western edge of town and bring in jobs, sometimes we would, it would be advisable, at least I'll say, from my opinion, from a policy perspective, to borrow that money so that we can get the benefit now of something that'll last long-term. And so my question to you is, I'm not wanting to put you in a place of making policy choices because those are unfair questions. But when we try to balance these ideas of what we borrow and when, and when it's prudent to do so, is it a prudent factor to look at what other funding sources are available for acting versus not acting? Is that a prudent consideration?
I would say it always is. And I would say it's probably one of the things that you expect me and the other staff members to provide you.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the education.
I did have one very minor follow-up question. Seriously. On 5C, and that's the bonds for the improvements and repairs at the library.
Yes.
Going through those, and there are a number of projects encompassed, or at least being proposed to be included as a part of that. Because the original project on the CIP for this year was way under the...
It's 400,000, yeah.
And so we have a number of projects here that appear as though that they were authorized or anticipated for under fiscal year 18, we have more for 19, 20, 21. Well, and the only one that was current for this year was the carpet for 200,000, but then we have all the rest in future-year projects. Why are we bonding now for the larger number if we're not anticipating doing those other projects for some time into the future?
Because those projects would qualify for bond funding. They would make sense to be funded by bonds. To that extent, that would free up the gaming funds to go into the initial lease payment on the parking garage.
But don't we have other capital projects that are also equally as worthy that we could have done that with?
We may have, we may not have. But in order to get the right size, to not go over 2 million and not be too far under 2 million, I simply took what I had in the schedules and put together $2 million worth of movement.
Okay. So that was kind of the number that fit the capacity that we have to pursue for bonding?
Exactly.
If I may ask, did you say last time that we have up to three years after a bond?
Three years, 36 months from the time we receive the proceeds.
Okay. And as I recall, I don't think, and maybe Kathy can correct me, I don't think we've ever replaced carpeting in any sense since the library opened over a decade ago. Is that right? And we have, how many residents come to the library a year, ballpark figure?
About 300,000.
About 300,000? Okay.
When did it open?
10, 12 years ago, wasn't it?
Eighteen years ago?
Eighteen? Seriously? Oh, my.
It predated the Mid America Center, which is...
Okay. I feel a little older now. All right. That's a pretty good carpet.
Yeah. Looks better than, I think, for that long, that much traffic.
You worked, Dylan.
Well, it certainly, and no disrespect, I think the library staff have done a very good job of stretching the resources out. But 18 years, the carpet, it could use some new carpet.
You've been in that, I should know you have, that public meeting space. It's pretty shabby.
And I was not questioning the...
Oh, no. And I'm not saying you were.
I was just wondering why...
I'm not saying you were.
Why we came up with that number for...
No, it was a good question.
Makes sense.
I don't mean to imply you're questioning.
If we're going to use the entire proceeds for carpet, that's going to be a pretty nice carpet.
Well, that's true. Yeah.
Other questions on the public hearings? Anything on the resolutions? Let's see.
If I could make one comment on the public hearings, I believe it would be appropriate to have one public hearing for all the bond items, but have separate votes on each of the bonds, if that's agreeable.
All right.
Yes?
Yeah, I think so.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
6C I will be abstaining on. That's Brent Shore and my husband's company. I have a contract with them for engineering work, so...
I have a question on 6C. Apologize, my voice is gone.
Can you speak up?
Yeah. Just out of curiosity, how are we coming up with 12 years of TIF money? Versus four, versus seven? I mean, it just seems like, I haven't even seen a four-year TIF in the time I've been up here. Does that happen?
Four-year TIF? We've never done a four-year TIF.
Right. Why? I guess it's my question, why haven't we done a four-year TIF versus 12, or 18, or 15? I mean, it's...
People haven't really requested it.
Cash flow, right?
Four-year?
Right. Well, of course not. They're going to request as much, you know...
Doesn't it depend on the cash flow and the percentage?
Well, we do look at the financial aspect of the project. Now, you had, now that you brought up, you know, the whole issue of TIF on this project, what they are doing is preparing an application for low-income housing tax credits. So we have to give some preliminary commitments to them, for them to be competitive. I think at the last meeting, you had a group with, is it Holy Family?
Yeah. They call themselves Corpus Christi now. Formerly Holy.
And based upon my conversations with counsel, that there might have been some willingness to provide property tax abatement on that. Is that correct?
Correct.
And I'm not sure exactly the amount. But we have to go through a series of procedures on that. Right now, we can do a four-year tax abatement for an affordable housing project, which gives them essentially four years of property tax payment. We can prepare an urban revitalization area for that. And we could recommend 60, 65% abatement for an affordable housing project for that project. And, but, in order to do that, you know, we have to create a plan. And if we put a new abatement schedule for that project, we have to essentially modify all their plans. Sort of make work, and it can be done, but that's how we're going to proceed on that. So although you see, you know, a 60% TIF for 12 years, if we go the tax abatement route, that's what we would recommend on this project.
12 years as well?
No, 10. The thing you've got to keep in mind is, in fact, I just sent an email to somebody who was asking this question. If you were going to TIF something, let's say it's a million dollars, we capture about, the city can capture slightly over 80% of the tax revenues on a new project, assuming there's base value. We cannot capture the structural support levy, the county's debt service, the city's debt service, et cetera. So you take those out. So we're capturing slightly 80%. So we rebate something, it's 60% of 80, which is about 50%, okay? So if you do that over 12 years, it comes out to be essentially six full tax years. And if we were going to provide the incentive, and, you know, to one project because it's an affordable housing project, then we have to be consistent with that in all of our urban revitalization areas. So 60% an abatement is 100%. I mean, that's 60% of all taxes. You know, in a re-abatement situation, or an abatement situation, you are essentially abating 60% of the city's taxes, 60% of the county's taxes, 60% of the school district taxes. So it comes out the same way. Does that make sense?
A little bit. I guess it still doesn't make, like, how did we come up with 12? I mean, how did you come up with six? I mean...
Because they had a gap. And quite frankly, we couldn't fill the gap by, we're looking at, you know, these deals, you generally have a mosaic of funding in them. Tonight, you have a resolution approving the workforce housing tax credits. That is tax credits from the state of Iowa, a sales tax exemption. If you build four more apartments, four more residential units on a site that previously was developed, you qualify. Our exposure to that is nothing, other than to administer it. We are going to contribute up to $250,000 in home funds. We have to use not only what we have budgeted in 2017, but we'll probably have to use what's in 2018. So it's not like we haven't looked at other sites, another funding. If we had that ability, we would. The other thing you keep in mind on these projects is, well, the assessor is required by law on a multifamily project to look at three different ways of valuation. On these types of projects, the state law basically says you will look at the income approach. You know, and the assessed valuations of these projects could be 20, 25,000 a unit. And you apply your rollback. So they're not generating a great deal of taxes to begin with. So, you know, and if you do a TIF rebate, or you do a rebate, you're really not, the numbers are not real high.
I guess, I mean, like you said, they're getting, you know, 260,000 home funds, 106,000 and...
250,000 home funds, they're getting state tax credits.
Right. I mean, I guess, like I said, they're already getting that. Do they get everything? I mean, we're just going to give the house away?
Well, if you want the project to happen, my professional has been, you approve it.
Let's just paint us in a corner, though. I mean, it's like, oh, you got to vote for it, or it's not going to happen.
Well, I don't think it will. Because there'll be a gap.
Well, if I could, because I have a related question that might help a little bit. But you were referring to, you know, filling that gap in order to make the project feasible. Okay. And then, I was reading over that your kind staff provided us today, and it's a one September letter from you to Iowa Economic Development. And it... And it, it talks about, uh, city sources as part of the redevelopment effort, or city source, sources of financial support, I guess, to the project. And one of those, you discuss the, the, the price of the property itself, or what the property's worth. And you talk about the twenty percent cash down payment. And then the balance, and I won't quote the balance here for, for obvious reasons, but state balance will either be granted to the project by the seller, or provided as a soft loan. What'd you mean by, by that?
Well, that there would be some cash payment, um, that the, whatever is unpaid at closing would be a second or a third loan that would be on the property until the first mortgage is gone. And we may receive funding in twenty years, fifteen years. That's what I mean by that. It would carry out a very low interest. The thing to keep in mind on these projects is, is that, you know, these are rent-restricted units, okay? You know, that is going to essentially keep the building updated to pay the property taxes. And not much more. I mean, essentially, the way these projects work is there is an eight-point-six-million-dollar federal tax credit that has been, will be applied for through the, you know, the, the, this program has been around since the late eighties, it, it, and each state gets an allocation. It goes to the Iowa Finance Authority. Anybody that submits an application, submits it, they're awarded these tax credits. And essentially, they go and they take this award, they sell it on a secondary market to, let's say, a rich, uh, well, let's say, an insurance agency that wants long-term investment, a bank, uh, somebody with a lot of tax liability. Warren Buffett, I think, is, is one of the major investors in the Midwest Equity Group over in Omaha that does this. So they take this eight-point-six billion and they sell it, depending upon the year, what else is going on, anywhere from eighty-five to ninety percent of value. So that becomes equity for the developer, in this case Bryn Shore, to build this building. Now, they run a pro forma, and there is only so much out there for a second note. They do not, there, you just cannot produce enough revenue to pay off debt.
And, and I wasn't questioning-
Then why do it?
If you can put the money together, then it makes sense, but if, if someone walks into me at the bank and says, "I wanna build a rental property that will produce a thousand dollars a unit rent", then I do an income approach, I take it times a capitalization rate, which, for that type of properties, probably in the neighborhood of twelve percent, you, you divide your income by twelve percent, that gives you a value of what the property's worth. And so you say, well, the, the property's worth eight million, it's gonna take me twelve or thirteen million to build it. That's your gap, and so you gotta get money to fill in the gap, or the project doesn't work. Now, if it's, if it's a high-end deal where you're getting twenty-four-hundred rents for the same unit, then you got a whole different story, and you don't have the gap. But, but to, to fit this market where we need housing, there is a gap.
And you will find there is plenty of elderly people that will qualify for this, in this community. That need, uh, to dispose of their home, uh, that need to get out of an apartment that they can afford.
And, and I, I'm not questioning the legitimacy, the legitimacy of the project, or, or the difficulties of the financing. I, I just want some clarification as to what that particular sentence meant in that letter, because kind of suggested that in addition to the investment of the, of the grant funding and the TIF funding, we're also looking potentially at a hundred thousand dollars more, she say will be granted to the project by the seller, that would be us, or provided as a soft loan.
No, you're, you're right.
Okay.
Now, I understand, they, they're gonna submit an allocation. And we administratively will, uh, provide, assuming it's passed, we will provide essentially letters that outline how we're looking at assisting this project. Those letters will also say, subject to the legislative process. This, if you were going to, um, you know, use TIF on this project, we will have to do a development agreement. That has to come back here. You know, if we are going to enter a purchase agreement, that's gonna come back here. So if there's other expenditures, typically, it's gonna come back here.
In an ideal world, we wouldn't need to use TIF at all, but we don't live in that.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to tell you is, is if we go through and we assist this other project, I'm, trust me, and I, if we can figure out a way to use the property tax abatement system, rather than TIF-ing a project, we will do that every time, just simply because the amount of, of detail you have to go through in actually doing a TIF project, not only for my staff up front, but also for finance every year, we have to certify this stuff, and it, it's, it's administratively burdensome on very small projects. So if we can figure out a way to do, you know, abatement, I just gotta forewarn you, if we go down that path, it's like any section forty-two project, anywhere in a community, you know, would receive that, you know, that possibility.
Which could have some significant unintended consequences.
It does, you know. Now, I'm not gonna sit here and say that we have two or three of these projects every year. No, we do not. In fact, I think the last one that was funded might have been the one on Twenty-third, four or five years ago. This is a highly competitive program, there's no guarantee, uh, that Bryn Shore will be funded, no guarantee that, uh, the Corpus Christi or the Catholic Diocese will be, be funded. And every time you get things that are more competitive, guess what the state will do to us? Show us your local match. Show us that this means something to you.
Yeah.
So we're playing, you know, you know, numbers games on, on those types of issues too, so.
Well, and in the-
And that kind of drives these things, and I would say this project itself, is probably not much different than past section forty-two projects we've done.
And in the end, I, I would submit that, uh, besides being the right thing to do, in my opinion, I, I'd submit that in the end, it's long-term, less expensive to, to help ensure good quality, minimally decent, this isn't the Taj Mahal, housing to, to particularly our elderly folks. I think in the end, having secure, safe places for folks hasn't all, the jobs that are created, creating the housing and managing the housing, and where else would these folks go? Think in the end, one way or the other, the taxpayer is going to be paying to help a sizable number of people who don't have anything else. And we ought to do it in such a way that provides jobs for people and provides decent homes for those folks.
Well, the other thing I will tell you is, is that, um, there's really only one affordable housing program left in this country. And that is the section forty-two program. They used to have the two-to-two program that would build one project in Iowa a year. Used to have an eight-eleven project that would build one project for maybe the mentally or physically handicapped. Those are all gone.
Yeah, all gone.
And so that drives the competition.
It also says down that we'll construct First Avenue from Twenty-seventh to Twenty-ninth. Is that the bike path, or is that?
Well, that's First Avenue, and we contemplate having a trail along it.
Well, we put a trail just right behind, like, um, Fifteenth.
Well, I guess we, we have to have a debate on it, it is, it is, uh, you know, right now, we're just doing preliminary design and preliminary cost tests. I mean, First Avenue is where the railroad track was.
Right.
So not only do we have to do the railroad track, but we also have to fix First Avenue and Twenty-eighth Avenue. And you have to fix Twenty-eighth, I mean Twenty-ninth and First Avenue, because what's gonna happen is, is these roads will, the sump or the drainage for that street will be the intersection. Now, if you cross any of those streets, there is a slight bump on every one of them. So that has to be, you know, figured out. But, you know, our plan would be to call, you know, and build a trail on the south side, along with rock.
Well, just says construct First Avenue, and I just didn't know if that was-
No, it would include a trail, but-
Or is it a trail?
Well, I have to have that conversation ultimately with, with Larry is, is do we construct it bit by bit? You know, because one block a trail, and you can do much, but, or do we, you know, just get the street in and, and make way for it, and then put it in? I mean, I personally think we should probably put it in while we're constructing, so, but we'll have that discussion.
Well, but, I mean, that's in this, construct First Avenue?
Yes, it is.
A street?
As a street, or as a-
As a street.
As a street, as a street.
For four hundred and fifty thousand.
Because that was part of the plan for-
It basically is a-
First Avenue when the tracks-
Twenty-six-foot wide street, curb and gutter, reconstruction, both ends of the interchange, storm sewer. Might have a little electrical work buried underground, I think there's a short water main extension we gotta do. I think we're okay with sanitary sewer, um, and a trail sidewalk.
And we would be doing that with any development, even if they weren't requesting anything in order to-
Some, some of those things, would they not go on the developer? I mean, First Avenue, I mean, they're just gonna develop their property, now they're requiring us to on top of what we're already giving them? I mean, that's what this says, right?
We are going to construct it. Yes, we are. Not that one. It's just not the capacity to do that.
Other questions on that topic? Other questions on anything on the resolutions?
So, I'm, Don, I, I had something very quickly on six B. And, uh-
Home investment funds?
Yeah, well, actually, yeah. Yeah, this is, uh, we got, as I alluded to earlier, some information from your shop, and and we, we recite, received a copy of the agreement relating to the, to the home funds. There's also an agreement, says here in the staff package under six B, that by passing the resolution this evening, we authorize mayor to execute a contract with HUD for use of the community development block grants. I have not seen a copy of that contract, I don't think it was either posted to the packet or-
It's not here yet. I guess-
So it doesn't exist?
Well, but here, here's the dilemma, let me explain.
Okay.
Okay. You know, um, HUD tells, well, the fiscal year, what are we in, the federal fiscal, you know, seventeen?
As of October one, federally.
Yeah, October one, okay. We have a deadline, well, first of all, we're in a home consortium with Omaha, which means that council boards, uh, submits an application together with Omaha. And when we prepare it, it just goes in. And I think that due date is sometime in October, late October, early November. We have no idea, uh, what the allocation is. All we're doing is taking last year's. Now, Congress will have to pass ultimately the THUD bill, the Transportation HUD bill. And if it is substantially different, we'll be back here. But we may not get that till June of seventeen.
Well, there's a, there's the question of how much money is gonna be allocated.
Well, understand, we do not execute any contract with these sub recipients until we get that contract.
Okay. So we're, we're authorizing the, the mayor to sign a contract at a future time?
Yes.
And, but we don't know what, how the terms of the contract are going to be changed from what they were in the past. And, and the reason I ask that is because HUD has just launched a, a number of regulatory changes that, that weren't approved by Congress, so that there, there are regulatory changes that place additional responsibilities upon municipality.
Well, I would say, you know, define substantial, okay? If, if, if we get five thousand dollars more than we project, I mean, do you wanna see it again?
I guess I wanna see what, what we're being asked to do in return, because these, these grants usually comes with strings attached, and that those strings are the, are the contract.
Of course they do, and they apply to the projects that, which we would implement.
Do our contracts contain a contingency clause, that if something's, a funding, a funding out clause, that if something isn't funded, we don't do it? Isn't that pretty standard?
Well, I just said, I mean, you, you'll see, you know, MICA house in here, you'll see-
Sure.
Pressured worship center, you'll see domestic violence, you'll see these other projects. We're not gonna make a contract and pay those out before we have actually seen a contract, the mayor has executed, that's added to our letter of credit.
In my experience-
But typically, what happens is, uh, the clock will start ticking, ticking July one, or January one. So let's say that we're assisting somebody with operational costs, and it's three thousand dollars a month. They'll start doing that themselves.
Sure.
And once we have a contract, they'll be submitting essentially seven months' worth of reimbursement, or six, or five, you know, depending upon when we get the contract.
I used to see that a lot when I did a fair amount of nonprofit work, they, they- There's a general understanding in, in that community that serves folks, that, that the funding will come, and it may not come in the amount you'd hoped for.
Correct.
There, there used to be, in that sense, slightly disappointed.
Well, it could be higher. It could be lower.
Yeah, it could be higher, I suppose.
You know, if, if, if it is lower, then we have to adjust
Sure.
our application,
Sure.
which requires a board meeting with SEDAC, it requires ultimately a council approval, readjusting that. Where do we take a fifty thousand?
I can recall. We, we've adjusted before many times, I think, yeah. Thank you.
Other questions on the resolutions?
I could generally-
Sure.
The, I wanted to, I'm reminded, and I'll fess up and say I'm reminded by the, the, uh, the app, the My Waste app has reminded me of, of the recycling centers award. And I don't know if everyone got it now, or if it's just because tomorrow happens to be my garbage day, but, not sure which. But I did, I did wanna, uh, stress to, to Don Dirks and, and all the wonderful folks, including at the recycling center, how very appreciative, appreciative we are of all, all the work that's done. And I, I hope people understand, uh, through the various outlets that they get their news from, how, how it's, it's remarkable how over half, as I understand it, please correct me if I'm wrong, over ha, a little over half of the amount of items that used to be just thrown away and went in depth for hundreds or thousands of years in a landfill, and the cost of that, and dollars upfront, and, and to the environment, are now being recycled, and it's creating jobs that actually pay for themselves. And the productivity and the hard work those folks do, the city workers at the recycling center, and to win- let me get this right, the Iowa Recycling Association has named the Council Plus Recycling Center the winner of the 2016 Recycling Program of the Year Award. I just don't think any of us up here could say enough for all the, the hard work that you do, and cooperation with so many folks. I'll, I'll admit, till about two and a half years ago, I didn't recycle really at all, to be honest. Was finally shamed into it, frankly, by a neighbor. Uh, and now I'm into the habit. I, I'm, I'm slow and stubborn, and it took me, it took me a little while, but it took me a couple of months to really get into it. But then I realized how much junk I threw away. And so it's also picking on myself for a moment. It's easiest to do. It's changed my habits. I used to waste a lot more, especially paper, frankly. And I imagine there are a lot of folks like me that did that. And, uh, there's still room for improvement yet, I assure you, but, uh, so that partnership between the, the residents, and you do a great job of getting that word out, and, and the jobs that have been created, so that we're not only reducing the upfront costs in the landfill, creating jobs, and helping the environment. A win-win-win. So, so thank you, and if you pass that along from all of us, if I may be so bold as to say that, uh, that, that we're appreciative of all the hard work, and it is hard work that they do.
All right. Anything else on the agenda? All right, we have a pending executive session for pending litigation.
Motion to go into executive session.
Second?
I'd actually like to include a land acquisition on that as well. And both those topics are appropriate for a closed session pursuant to 21.5 of the Iowa Code, C, 1C and 1J, and that we'll be discussing pending litigation and acquisition from.
And I concur with that. Do you concur? We both concur.
Sandow?
Hi.
Watson?
Hi.
White?
Hi.
Ted?
Hi.
Ring and bird.
Aye.